It with a hot pool of gloom when suddenly Washington came.
Zero amounts of narcotics being decriminalized. So that changed a lot of things with not only just the policing in general, but with utilization of a narcotics canine, put a lot of restrictions on us where we have to go forward and have to get a search warrant instead of going off of what our canine is telling us with an alert, a final alert, acting as our probable cause to maybe seize a vehicle and go through it. Now that changed it to where we'd have to go contact the judge and get a search warrant because we can't determine amounts of drugs just based off of a canine's alerting. We could just, oh, the odor is there is what the canine alert tells us. Additionally, with measure one ten, a lot of narcotics programs around the state have shut down, meaning that we've got fewer trainers and we've got fewer handlers in general. So it's been very difficult for us to even find the appropriate and effective training, just because so many people have stopped their programs altogether. Next, please. Having a detection canine would be very useful and Gemma was really useful. She was a great partner and she was able to get us through a lot of things and not, not just in town, but with assisting other agencies. But the difficulties again with measure one ten make it near to impossible with the, with such a small amount of traffic coming through Sweet Home makes it just so much more difficult. And I think I covered that already with the odor of narcotics versus the amount. So they could only detect the odor that's there. They can't tell us the amount, right? Next, please. Benefits of a patrol canine. So tracking is probably one of the most important ones that I want to hit on is because even in just recent times, I've myself and other officers have had people with felony warrants run from us. And sometimes people are a lot faster than us. They're probably now wearing forty pounds a year. So when, when people run from us and there are times where people get away, if they have something like a felony warrant or we have probable cause for felony arrest, we could utilize canine. Canine is going to be faster than a human. So hopefully we can prevent people from getting away in situations like those. Now, use of force here. As far as the canine goes, they provide not just a physiological deterrent with seeing the dog and being like, okay, I don't want to get bit. So I'm going to comply, but also psychological thing. They could hear it and be like, okay, there's a dog. I'm not going to mess around. They're going to catch me anyway. And hopefully with that last, last statistic on that page showing that I believe it was thirty-one deployments of zero bites. That's just incredible. They can get compliance without even having the dog to actually do anything other than be there. Next, please. Now, there's an obvious factor which is liability, but the statistics kind of speak for themselves. If you have a trained, a well-trained canine, a canine handler, so a canine team, liability isn't even there. We look at Ben Arthur's statistics there that he's shown us from last year. I think it kind of speaks for itself. There's, there can be liability, yes, but as far as what I believe is that myself and a canine as a team, we'd put our best foot forward and we'd always make sure that we're doing one, what's right and two, what's legal. So I don't think that the liability factor is necessarily there. Next. Statistics from Albany PD, just on the handout. So the first page, it shows by day, week, year. So their busiest was Sundays, right? I don't think those statistics are really that relevant to us. They have such a bigger area to patrol and to, to maintain. But the next one is where we start talking about doing agency assists. So it's not only that the canine would work for the city of Sweet Home, but it would benefit the county as well, depending on where things are happening. If they don't, if, if there's not a canine available, you know, in Brownsville, maybe I could head out that way and just have them be an assisting officer on that if they needed one for tracking purposes or something like that. Patrol types, so that it's showing what, what deployments were for. Now they're deploying the dog for area searches for humans more often than anything else. So they're just trying to find somebody is what that means. Then a building search would be for humans as well. And then non, I'm not entirely certain what non-search would be for. That may be just deploying it as a physiological or psychological deterrent to, to gain compliance. That could be what that means. I don't know for certain. And the very last page, I think is the most important one. I've hit on it a couple of times already here. But I believe that this shows just how effective a patrol canine can be when utilized effectively by a good team. So as far as everything else goes, do you guys have any questions whatsoever?
You were talking about narcotics. And will the dog be able to love fentanyl?
So there's actually only one dog in the state that can alert to the odor of fentanyl and that's down in, I think it's Medford PD has that dog, but there's only one dog at the state that can do that, to my knowledge. There was a news article on it fairly recently. I believe it was last month.
You know, I don't, I don't hope that, I'm hoping we get this canine, I'm all for, I'm ecstatic for it, to be honest with you. Not just fighting suspects, but for the protection of our officers and not only tracking suspects when they run from the police, but back in the eighties, when I worked for the county, I got the golden opportunity to work with the canine over there. And I don't know if those remember Raider. Raider was phenomenal. That dog could find any lost child, any lost person, even way a long time after they've left. It was amazing. And if they're trained right, man, oh, man, they're an asset.
Absolutely.
So I'm, I'm ecstatic for this.
I think Chief Ogden has a story about that. He could tell you later, but.
But you know, the thing of it is with that fentanyl, that's one of the biggest concerns I have is the amount of fentanyls coming into the US and coming into our area. So if there is an opportunity to get the canine trained on fentanyl, I would highly recommend it.
Right. And we, that's something we can definitely look into. As far as what we're looking at right now, we're trying to get a canine that is patrol ready. But with that, we can also do what they call a dual purpose dog, have a dual purpose canine, meaning that they can do patrol work, which is what I described earlier, and they can do detection work. Now, I've spoken with several other handlers that have been doing it for a lot longer than I have. And they kind of pointed me in the direction that we would want to be able to have the option to get them trained for narcotics detection if measure one ten is changed. Because it just, it's so difficult for us right now to even enforce really anything. We used to be able to, to look in a car and see a small baggie and we're going to see the whole car. Now it's, okay, here's your citation, but that's neither here nor there. We can't change that now. So what other questions do we have?
Any councilors have questions?
Okay, so not that I care so much, but what's the cost of getting to training?
The training.
Not you, the dog.
Getting the dog?
Yes.
Okay, the dog was, is the most expensive part about it. I've spoken with some people from Lynn County Sheriff's Office and I've spoken with people from Bend Police Department where they get their dogs from Northern California. Their kennels all over the place we can get dogs from. They got theirs for around $10,000, I think Deputy Sheets was telling me.
But that's just the dog? Is that a trained dog?
That's a trained dog. A dog's ready to go. All we have to do is establish the team, train together as a team to get them used to me and work on making sure our obedience is on point and making sure that we can function effectively as a team. And then there's a certification process done through the Oregon Canine Police Canine Association. You have to certify every year and that's to ensure that the team is good to go.
So the narcotics thing is, is not, I don't want to say a waste of time, but bottom line, if you have to get a subpoena or whatever or want or whatever it is, you're probably just spitting in the wind. If you can't get a judge, how are you going to, they're going to go, they're going to get away. But I think it's good that we have that both of it's the most positive thing that we need, obviously, because it's, it's a pain.
Right.
But it's kind of, I've that it ties your hands. And so that's really not very good. And thank you very much for the people that put that together. Now, so do you have a timeframe right now for a dog?
I don't have a timeframe right now, but we're hoping to be first quarter next year.
So is that August, Paul?
I believe so.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys and the dog's a good thing.
Thank you.
Good thing.
Any other questions, councilors?
All right.
Thank you, Officer Proudie.
Thank you.
For your presentation. At this time, we'll open up for recognition of visitors hearing petitions. Any citizens would like to come forth, be heard before council. Okay, we'll move on to old business. Information only Pleasant Valley Bridge water main repair.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilors. I wanted to circle back with you guys on the repair, the emergency repair that occurred. We had a failure of a water main, twelve inch water main inside the Pleasant Valley Bridge that occurred August 22nd. I came to you the next day asking for an emergency work order. You guys granted that not to exceed $50,000. I'm looking at my dates that, that it's off a little bit. We had pack excavation come out. They completed the work. They then, for the repair, then they ordered the brackets and supports which came in after about a month and a half. They rescheduled on October thirteenth and fourteenth and completed that work. Total cost was sixteen thousand five hundred. And I just provided a couple of examples of pictures. The first ones, I don't know if it's up there or anything. It's just on my presentation. We have any of? Yeah, don't worry. If not, I just can show you the pictures at some point. I have a couple of pictures from two examples of the brackets broken. And then what we show, here we go. If you can scroll back up just a little bit. So that first picture, scroll back up. Thank you. Go to the pictures. Okay, so those were two examples of the twenty-two brackets that were inside that bridge. And you can see how they vibrated around. If you can imagine, that's a twelve inch main, steel main, every gallon of water weighs, you know, weighs about eight point three, four pounds. Over time with the vibration, those brackets wore out and broke. So we had all those replaced. If you can scroll down. As a part of that project, it was recommended that we brace in between those hangers to actually support it from underneath. So it would move in conjunction with the bridge. And so that's kind of what we did. The last picture is the actual break itself. And you can see the repair and new material on that to keep for corrosion. If you go to the next picture. And that's it. It broke at that one point and we went through and replaced all the hangers. Do you have any questions? I can answer those at this time.
Any questions, the council?
So where you've got the supports, is that going to, it doesn't look like it's spread out. Is that going to cause stress on the structure that's holding it there?
No, we were allowed to put those underneath as support. So we're, we're spanning in between and then in between those, we're bracing from underneath. So as that bridge flex, everything should move together. We could not, the county did not want it to attach those bottom braces to them. So they're secured in there well. We also set up as a, as, as a future check that when the county goes out there, we will interact with them and their inspectors will then provide reports to us, which they weren't, I don't even believe looking at our line before, but as we're told, that all should flex together and it should work. I believe just having that whole thing suspended from the top gave it a point to where eventually that cohangar broke. By doing that, it's not going to allow it to move. It's given it to support underneath it as well from the top.
Any other questions, again, council? All right, thank you, Greg. Next up RCA amendment to ODOT US twenty OR two twenty-eight ADA ramp IGA.
Mayor and council, as you probably recall, last year, we signed, the council approved an IGA with ODOT that had to do with the ramp project that is currently still under construction. As part of that project, we, thanks to Counselor Sanchez and our legislators at the state level, we were able to obtain some funding from our legislators to pay for an additional pedestrian crossing at Twenty Second Avenue and Main Street. And the, we, that's something that we had been working on for quite a while, trying to get that intersection safer because there have been a number of both incidents and near misses that made it just a very unsafe intersection for pedestrians. Fortunately, we were able to get that funding and that project was essentially inserted into the ODOT ramp project. At the time, we did not have the funding yet. And, and so what ODOT arranged was that it would be included in the project. And then later we would need to do an amendment to the IGA that would allow for that payment of the, of the funding that we received from the state. The, the state couldn't give it to itself. They had to give it to us first and then we give the funding back to ODOT, which was a sum of $500,000. And so this, before you is the amendment that handles that. The money that is called for is that $500,000 that we received from the state. That money has been received by the city. And there is no other additional funding that is required of us. Brendan Burbank from ODOT is on the line also and can answer any additional questions you may have.
Any questions, the council?
I'm okay with, with the transferring of the money, but I had some questions. When I drove out there the other day, I noticed there was a right turn only sign. Is it your intent to make that a right turn only corner or intersection? Can't hear you.
We have it muted. Just a second.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
You just muted me again. Oh, no, you're good.
There, there we go. Echo. Just a moment. Okay. There we go. So yeah, at Twenty Second Street, the intent is to have a right turn only. And that is to allow for the pedestrian island refuge where the RRFP is. And so then that way, somebody can't turn left at that location.
So that's where the intersection is going to be and you're going to direct all traffic to go across where the island is at? Right there beside and nobody turn left where there's no island?
So it would be on the, the west side of the intersection where, where the island is and the RRFP is. The intent is so that somebody cannot turn left and they can only turn right at that location if they're heading towards the, towards the lake.
Okay, so you're coming out from Bymart and you're directing traffic west instead of east. That is the intent.
Okay, I, I misunderstood what you're saying. So I'll have to look at the specifics, but I don't, I don't see a reason right off the top of my head. And I'll look at the design where you couldn't turn left at that location as you're leaving Bymart. But I'll double check the, the design and then get back to you on that.
There was a little sign already up.
Just to clarify, which, which direction are you talking about?
Leaving Bymart, headed south.
Headed south on Twenty Second?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's a little sign, the one of those little fold up ones right there saying right turn only. And I foresee our community not being thrilled about not being able to turn left, but that's exactly why you have a pedestrian stop in the middle of the road is to protect people, but that's where you're now directing traffic. So I was confused by that.
I'll defer to Brennan on this, but to my knowledge, there was not any plan for any restrictions on turning left off of Twenty Second onto Main Street, coming from either direction, either north or south.
So, because I'm, I don't understand why there's a sign there right now.
Right.
Saying to do that.
It may be temporary construction signage.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm thinking right now.
Okay. They haven't picked up some codes, some of the signs, something two, three months after they complete the block. So they may just have picked it up.
I haven't seen work. We've been able to turn left until now and I haven't seen anything significantly going on, on the.
The barbershop.
Yeah.
I'm ninety percent sure that that's just temporary construction signage.
Okay, okay. And then and then there's been some problems out in Foster with the little pedestrian crossing space, people hitting that. Are we going to put extra reflectors and things on it so that people, when it's really nasty weather, because we get a lot of rain, a lot of bad weather, are able to see that better?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll speak to, to the Twenty Second Street portion. We did recognize that as soon as that, one of the RRFPs was hit, that we needed to add some additional guidance to drivers. And so while I'm working with my team right now to see what options we've got. And most likely we'll have some tubular markers so that it has some, not, not quite eye level reflectors, but has a lot more visibility for the, for the median. And then the other project that we have in town, putting in some of those median islands, they're having the same conversations. And my understanding was that they already had some reflectors included in the design, so above and beyond what Twenty Second Street had originally designed for, but we're, we're trying to work together to make sure that we're consistent through the corridor. So short answer, yes, we are working on additional reflectors.
I really like the idea of moving that crosswalk to that side of the street. I think it is a lot safer that way. Thank you.
Thanks for the questions.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mr. Burbank, I just want to say thank you so much for what you're doing in our community and investing on this highway twenty. It's been a long time coming and I'm really looking forward to continuing our relationship to bring more pedestrian safety and traffic safety to this highway. There's a lot of incidents and whatever we can do to keep our community more safe. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, and thanks for the comment. And we try the best we can to help coordinate, you know, with both you at the local agency and others. And that's a really high priority for us. And so to the work that you guys have done to, you know, have.
Looks like we may have lost. We lost you for a second there.
Okay, but yeah, really appreciate the, the work that you've done to help add that to the project and we can have that coordination to create that efficiency. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you again on this evening, answering our questions. At this time, council directive.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the proposed amendment to intergovernmental amendment three, four, eight, nine, two, with ODOT as presented and authorized the city manager to sign it.
Second.
Motion second by rule call, please.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
At the record show of seven S's, no nays, approval of the amendment to ODOT US twenty, twenty, twenty-eight ADA ramp IGA. Next up is new business. I have two proclamations to read this evening. The first one is proclamation of election. Whereas there has been put to the voters of the city of Sweet Whereas there has been put to the voters of the city of Sweet Home petitions to fill vacancies on the city council. And whereas declarations of candidacy were voted upon in the statewide general election, November 8th to 2022. And whereas results of said election have been counted, canvassed and returned. Now therefore, I Greg Mahler, mayor of city of Sweet Home, do proclaim this falls. The outcome of the voting of the council position described above was Susan M.C. Coleman, 20 2066, Greg Mahler, 1614, Dylan Richards, 2034, James Reisinger, 1232, David L. Lowman, 1501, Josh Thorstad, 1924, ride in 108, ride in 43, ride in 20, ride in 15. Other overvotes, 16, undervotes, 5,827. Susan Coleman, Dylan Richards and Josh Starstad will fill in his four year terms. Greg Mahler will fill in his two year term on the city council proclaimed this 13th day of December 2022. Next proclamation, this is on, and I, good luck if I pronounce this one cycle bend. Whereas there have been referred to the voters of city of Sweet Home measure 22 dash 199 bearing the following title. City of Sweet Home prohibits cycle bend businesses. Shall the city of Sweet Home prohibit cycle bend related businesses? Which the measure was voted upon the general action held on November 8th, 2022. And whereas the results said election have been counted, canvassed and returned. And whereas Mayor LaChelle issue the proclamation is false. Now therefore, I Greg Mahler, mayor of city of Sweet Home, do proclaim as false. Section one canvassing the voting of the measures above describe shows the following results. Yes, 2,437, no, 1,545, overvotes two, undervotes 116. And then the majority of those voted the measure were in favor of it. Section two, this measure becomes effective January 1st, 2023. Section three, the city recorder shall publish this and post this proclamation and file it with the measure. Proclaim this 13th day of December, 2022. Okay, and that also said, I also congratulate Josh Starstad, he's here this evening. Counselor Richards and Counselor Coleman for their being elected back into office. Congratulations. Moving on RCA. New bandstand for Sankey Park. And we do have the park and tree commission here this evening to ask the questions.
So I'll let them, let Wally talk, but just to kind of remind you of the history. There was a bandstand structure in Sankey Park that was a, been there for quite a while. Unfortunately, it had deteriorated over the years and been hit by a tree. And the cost of bringing it up to code and bringing it up to usable condition was greater than the estimated cost of replacing it. And so it was ultimately removed from the park. Ever, at the time we talked and, and all the public communication was to the effect that everyone wanted this replaced with something that would hearken back to the original. And eventually take the place of, we fill that void. Since that time, the park and tree committee has had several discussions about the bandstand and and done quite a bit of research and some visioning on what they, they recommend replace it with. And at this time, we do not have a budget for that. However, it is assumed that we would be going through a donation campaign and seeking grant funding. It's much easier to get donations and grants if you actually have some sort of plan or vision for the, the structure. And so I think the idea being that we'd like to settle on some sort of vision for the structure so that we can move forward with attempts to fund, to raise the funds for it. But I'll let Wally take over from there.
Good evening. I'm Wally Shreves, chairman of park and tree committee. I'd just like to introduce the other members of the park and tree committee, please. Raise your hand. Lena Tucker, Nancy Patton, Deborah Northern and Bob Dalton. Thank you for coming tonight. Can we put the picture up there? Thank you. So as, uh, you already stole half my presentation. We, uh.
That's a good thing, by the way.
It is. We decided to go out and canvass the community, find out what people would like for a bandstand. Did a lot of communication with people, found out that the wooden structure similar to what might have been there and in some semblance of it is what we would like. And actually, uh, our councilperson, Counselor Trask and Bob Dalton went up and visited a company up north that provided us a building similar to that, as you can see in the picture. That is a general representative of what we would like to see come back into the community. When we went through and looked at this project, I don't know if you have the handout for it. It's a, I'd just like to start off with the cost. So when I went through, we, I talked to several construction people, outfits, concrete, electrical. This is as we want to determine worst case scenario for total cost. So that it's not a, a surprise. I expect that to come in well under that because several of these costs can be reduced through work done by the Greg's crew or donations within people from within the community doing construction to help out. So the building itself is, the plan is it's 40 by 26 with two pushouts. As you can see there, the entire building has no bolts in it. It's all, what do they call it? Counselor, the pegs? Yeah. Well, they completely, thank you. They completely assembled the building beforehand and, and then they take it apart, label every piece, palletize it and deliver it. So it is, it's a Lego set to put it back together. It does not come with the roof, so we'd have to add the roof to it. When we looked at the roof, we were looking at, that's a composite roof there. We were looking at a metal roof, so it would be very similar to the rest of the roofs that are in the park at this time. Additionally, you have the other renderings down below. So there you can see the position of it in reference to the entrance to Sankey Park. In the back of it already is a, a slight hill, a mound that was built up. That would be perfect for a terrace system for people to seat on with ADA access coming in from the west at the bottom level so that people can see it. In addition to ADA access, when we designed the concrete structure, there's an ADA ramp on the side. So we could get people up there into the building. So the building itself sits on a four inch thick rebar reinforced concrete. There's post mounts, tube mounts underneath for support where each one of the posts would go. The building has these pushouts, which were in addition to where we initially started in the middle. That, so that you can see into it. So if you're sitting there up on the terrace, you can see all the way through. If you're up higher, you can see down into the bandstand. That's the direction that we would like the city to work on and move forward with. What are your questions?
Any questions to counsel?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, just regarding the size. How do you determine what size would be useful for our community?
What we did, we talked to the people that run the jamboree to find out bandstand sizes and what people bring in, you know, the general size of a bandstand. And this is just slightly larger than your average tractor trailer that's brought in. And that's kind of what we were looking for was what would be an average size that's out there already.
Great, thank you. By the way, I really like the see-through feature of that. I think it adds to safety. So, and visibility, it just looks good. So, yeah, I like that.
And the entire structure is Douglas fir treated, stained. It's UV treated. They can come back, give us materials that we can re-treat it every three years with. There was concern about using a wooden structure because wood deteriorates. Previous bandstand untreated, made with trees lasted 100 years. So we use this material on concrete. Of course, it's raised off the concrete at the bottom, Douglas fir that's treated, UV protected, and it's all undercover. We feel it would last a very long time.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Mr. Dalton told me he can, he can raise millions of dollars. But I think, I think we can get some people that are going to donate some money and I know them personally and so does Mr. Dalton. However, I, I thought, I, I think I talked to Bob about that and I, I think we were talking about metal pipe posts instead. And then put the wood on there and that would be a better plan, I think. But we can, we can talk about that, but it's more money, obviously. We went and looked at one of those and it, and it had a lot of stuff with, a, a very rich person had in his. And it was, it was really, really nice. And I think we committed to having something happen in some point. I don't know what that timeframe is. But I, and I think it's a, a, well, on the very high list of what we want to get done in the parks. And that's on these folks. They're getting their stuff done. And so I, I think that we need to move forward, in my opinion, and get some more information that we need and get some in the, in the next year, get it in the, in the thing. And so we can have some, have some something that we can know when we move forward with it, because it's going to cost. It's, it's not cheap. And when we started out was less than 100, now we're past 100 and it's, it's, it's just costly. And as far as the Lego thing, when we looked at it, it's numbered one and one. So we could put it together, but it is big timber, big timber. It's not two by fours. It's a big piece of wood. And so I don't know that we can do that. I don't know we can. I think we can do the concrete. But anyway, so I think it's, I think it's something that we, I would like to see us move forward. And that's on you guys and they've done a good job. So I'm just, I'd like to move forward.
Another idea that can maybe consider too, is there's two or three companies in the area that have actually, I'll say new technology, but new technique of taking concrete and making it look like trees. And using that as your pillar. So something to think about.
We talked about all that as we were moving forward with it, just different ideas. And we went into every detail as far as, well, what if they vandalize this? And how would they vandalize that? And how will we protect this? And how could we replace that? And that was one of the ideas that Counselor Trask mentioned, using steel support structures with wood on the outside. So you could just replace it if something really bad happened to it. But as a general design, that's what we were looking at. And during the harvest festival and since then, we canvassed several prominent individuals throughout the community with a general design as this and said, is that something you would support? And they said, absolutely. They like that. But we were trying to find out what people thought of it.
Well, I think you get a lot of support on this. There's no, no doubt about it. Any questions to the council?
So Mr. Mayor, I really like this, this construction. And I particularly like the idea of putting the amphitheater seats there. It really adds to the versatility of it.
So Mr. Mayor, if I may, one of the things that was concerning to me is that we were tearing down the historic feature of the park, the bandstand. And I appreciate all the work that you guys have done to get us to this point in time. But I don't see how it replicates very well what the existing structure was. So if it were up to me, I would like some more intricate detail, maybe on the facade of the structure or something to better reflect what used to be there and remember that going forward. So I don't know if you guys have considered that or talked to people about how to get the intricate design on some of the structure or anything like that. I'd love to know more.
Yes, we did cover that. And I think, am I correct, Greg, we did keep some of that pieces of that material from the original bandstand that we could use on this structure. We weren't getting into the details that far, just to get this to move forward. Because until the council recommends that the city move forward with some planning on it, we were left in a hole. But yes, we've talked about trying to make it look, have similar items on it like the original.
I just don't want that to get lost in translation over the course of time. So I'll just remind people that little part, please.
Yeah, Mr. Dalton has a lot of history with that park and the bandstand. It's definitely a thought of his as well.
I think as we move forward with an amphitheater, we'll be closer to what the original design of the park was intended as we go forward. But at this time, I think we're all in agreement. So if it's okay, Mr. Mayor, I move that we would accept this recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
At the record show of seven yeses, no nays, approval will move forward with the new bandstand in Sankey Park.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Next up RCA, Pacific Power Oregon Clean Fuels Electric Mobility Grant Application.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you may recall, when we went through the, the streetscape process, there were two streets that were identified as streets that could, that could be shifted to be one-way streets. One was 13th Avenue, which we, we've discussed significantly as a potential festival street. The other was 10th Avenue, which was just, is in the streetscape plan was designed as a complement to 13th to be one-way, the opposite direction is 13th. 10th Avenue there, it's between Key Bank and Subway. It is one block long. It, it ends at Main Street and it ends at Long Street. And so it only serves as a connection between the, between those points and as access to a couple of, of interior parcels. With that plan, that would, one of the reasons for shifting it to one way is not only to complement 13th Avenue, but mostly to provide additional parking to our downtown, which is something that we are constantly reminded of the need, need for by everyone. With that street going one way, it could host 90-degree angled head-in parking, which is the, the most parking you could fit in that space would be that 90-degree, much more than you could if it was 45-degree or if it was parallel as it is now. With that being identified in the plan, we came across this grant program through Pacific Power and the Oregon Clean Fuels Electric Mobility Program. And identified that area as a desirable location to host electric vehicle charging stations. This grant program covers the entire cost of that. It, it does not require a separate city match. It would be just pay for the entire thing. Not only does it not require a match, but you also can get up to 75% of the funding before the project is finished. And so it makes it a lot easier for a community to handle the cash flow required for a project such as this. In putting this grant application together, we got some information for Pacific Power on the feasibility of adding what they call DC fast chargers. And to, to back up a little bit, I should explain, there are three main types of charging stations for electric vehicles. One is your level one charger that is essentially a, the, the right kind of connector to have in your garage that could run off of your household circuit. It would take roughly eight hours to charge a vehicle with such a charger. Next up is the level two charger, which is a little bit faster. You're looking at four to six hours. Those are the kind that are typically being installed at businesses and by employers. If you have, you know, an employee come parking, they, they're at work and they're, they're long enough to justify charging a vehicle or something like that. And then there's what they call DC fast chargers, DC meaning direct current. Those have a different technology, but they are significantly faster at charging a vehicle. And your average electric vehicle can charge in around 45 minutes with a charger such as that. And so for people who are traveling, that is the ideal technology to be able to stop and get lunch while your vehicle charges. And you, you're. and you, you're ready to go. Given our position as the last community on the wet side of the, of the cascades, when, if you're an electric vehicle and you're contemplating driving over to Bend, you may not want to cross the cascades without a fully charged battery. And so it makes Sweet Home an ideal location for a, a charging station. It also makes us an ideal location for a fast charging station because this is something, that's something that a traveler would be wanting. They wouldn't be wanting to spend four to six or eight hours in a location. They'd be looking to stop long enough to charge and get some food and maybe, maybe shop around a little bit and then move on. So that's one of the reasons why we identify this, this spot as a, as a good location for this grant. And specifically why Sweet Home in general to Pacific Power and to those who are putting together maps of electric vehicle charging stations, they recognize Highway twenty as being a good route and position of Sweet Home on Highway twenty makes it a good stop or something like that. There aren't a lot of electric vehicle charging stations within public rights of way. This is not a, you don't see this very often. But on the other hand, there's really, I, I really, it seems like a very good use of public right-of-way, especially in a situation where with this, we're looking at a net increase of parking on that street. And so you'd essentially be taking two of those spots. I think there's about eighteen parking spots that would fit if you move Tenth Avenue to one way. And so we'd still have a very much a net increase in parking spots on that street. The original grant application in doing the research and talking to charging companies that build the chargers and run the chargers, we came up with the budget of about $250,000 to install two DC fast charging stations. And in the materials, you have the original, I, I believe the budget is in there, the original grant application. That was intentionally inflated, trying to be conservatively high with all of our cost estimates. So that when, you know, in this day and age, you can never be too careful. Ideally so that when we get the grant and if we move forward with it, we can have a, put out an RFP and hopefully come under. When we got notification that we had been awarded the grant, first of all, I was surprised that we got the award. It was, it was great. I was very pleased that, that our application was so competitive. But they did come in under what we had asked. They came in at 200,000 for the grant offer. In the process of applying for the grant, one of the questions they asked was, if you get less money than what you're asking for, what are your, what would you do? Would you just nix the whole program or what, how would you handle that situation? What I answered then and what I'm recommending now is that we don't, i- i- if we should move forward with trying to put, with putting out a request for proposals to see what this would actually cost for a company to put these in. If it comes in at over the grant amount, that doesn't mean we have to put other city funding into it. We can shrink the scope of the project so that it fits within what the grant will pay for. And there, with something like this, first of all, like I said, we built in some assumptions into the budget, hoping that we can come under it. But in addition, we don't have to put in two. We could put in one and then we could plummet four or two. So that we still are making it so that all we have to do is just plug in one more device if we had more funding later at a later time to do that. So there is room within this, within this program to shrink the scope and make it well within what the grant award is. And the, the granting agency is, is fine with that. They understand. So we have, we've received this grant award. It's basically in the council's lap now. This is an opportunity that would bring an amenity to downtown, not necessarily one that our current residents would use because frankly, anybody who owns an electric vehicle in Sweet Home most likely has a, a, the charging infrastructure that they've paid to put into their house and overnight charging is probably fine for them if they live in Sweet Home. This is not for them. This would be for travelers. And this would be a, a way to add an amenity to our downtowns to attract people that otherwise would not be stopping and to have them specifically stop in our downtown so that they would be able to patronize downtown businesses, downtown restaurants. The other, as, as a, for my economic development hat, the idea of having more people stop in Sweet Home is obviously what we want to accomplish, especially when those who have already been early, become early adopters of electric vehicles, tend to be on the upper incomes ga- side of the, of things. And so it's not a bad idea to have that crowd come to Sweet Home and spend some more time in our downtown. The grant agreement is, is before you, and I'm happy to take any questions that you have. It's essentially fully paid for by the, by the grant agency. Just the staff time to put out the RFP and, and organize the.
I know you're not too far off of your estimation because when I looked into, having them put in my level two estimate, I came back at fifty-six thousand and level three was a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So you're not too far off the, the mark of those costs.
One more thing I should add. I don't think the city should get in the business of managing or maintaining electric vehicle charging infrastructure. But I am perfectly happy with the city owning electric vehicle charging infrastructure and that's what this would be. Any agree, any movement for, further on this project would involve putting out an RFP, not only for the buying the equipment and installing it, but also for long-term agreements for maintaining and running the charging infrastructure. Essentially what these should be and what these chargers typically are is it's like kind of like a self-serve gas station, which we don't have in Oregon, but these are, it's like a vending machine that you're accessing. You stop there, you plug it into your card, you stick your credit card in and you pay for it. And so we're not providing free electricity to anyone. We would, the software and the company that manages it would take care of all of those transactions and be paid for out of the revenue that that system brings in. And then if there is profit off the top of that, then that would come back to the city.
Well, one, my, one concern I have, I mean, it's up to the council, one concern that what I looked into was the return on the investment. There was not a whole out there. It would take a long time to get return on that investment. So my concern was if the city is going to be spending more money out than we would get back in, in costing the city.
Yeah. And that's why the great thing about the grant is it pays for that, that upfront cost. And so the idea is to make sure that whatever agreements we enter into with the company to maintain this infrastructure that their, that the, their payment is entirely tied to usage of the equipment. So if there's downtime because the equip, because they're not maintaining the equipment properly, but they're the ones who don't get paid and not the city.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, it says here, fortunately, there is an area that we, they could trim down and make that cost. It's, you know, they said that they could do some difference, maybe it's only one of them instead of two. But it also says that we're owned by, it's owned by the city. So now they're going to get the money, but is there going to be, you said, I think you said there's going to be some money back to the city.
So that depends on what kind of, what kind of agreement we're able to reach with a, with a, one of these charging companies. And so essentially they, there are companies out there, ChargePoint is one, they have networks of charging stations. And they maintain them and they have software that runs these, this equipment so that it can charge the vehicle safely, but also charge the customer properly for the amount of power that they're using. And so that's what we'd be pursuing is an arrangement, a contract with a company that does that. Because again, that's not something the city wants to get into and there's plenty of private industry to handle that.
One other question that I never, you know, because I was looking, diving into this because of the need for it in our town, but one of the questions that was the liability.
Um, so that's a good question. We would want the insurance to be part of that maintenance agreement. Insurance for the charging station itself, the equipment. And that certainly can be written into the contract and we ensure that, because that's in the, that's in the charging company's interest as well.
Oh yeah, is what happens if some of that charging does something to the battery of that vehicle. They're not exactly cheap.
Right.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think the ideal situation that we would look for, for this, let me turn this up, would be to put out an RFP for someone who would design, build it and then maintain it or already be in partnership with somebody who would maintain it so that we could go ahead and write into that solicitation before we're even getting the final cost, all of our requirements, including any type of revenue that we could be bringing in, any type of insurance, so that we could mitigate any of that liability. And then by putting that out right away, if the council chooses to move forward with us accepting this grant, we could decide before we've been choose to move forward if it would still be in the city's best interest. So if you did decide to move forward with this grant, accepting that, we would immediately go out and do an RFP and make sure that it would come within the $200,000 of the grant and look at any type of revenue arrangement that we could put forward. And then we'd come back to council at that point.
Certainly there's a, there's an opportunity to pull the plug, so to speak, if this doesn't work out the way we want it to, because we don't have a budget allocated for this. This is entirely grant funded, needs to be entirely grant, grant funded.
Oh yeah, we have, definitely have to look at the ROI on it.
But Mr. Mayor, it doesn't make much sense for us to have those, even if we have just one, that there's not some some, some money that we, even if it's just a little bit. I mean, it would be better to, I, in my opinion, that, that why would we want it if it's not going to be better for the city to, I mean, we can have them sit there.
Well, there's two different ways for it to be better for the city. One, there's generating revenue. You know, I'm certainly not opposed to revenue. I love it. But the amenity in the downtown is even if we didn't get any actual revenue from it, even if the costs of, of this system only paid for itself and, and then went to the company who's running it, it would still be an amenity downtown, in downtown that we don't have right now. And it would still lead to, you know, Sweet Home being on the map when it comes to that charging infrastructure being a destination point.
Well, I, I agree with that. I do, but it would sure be nice if we could make something.
Oh yeah, I, I would love it.
You know, yeah, well, I think we all would. And I don't, I can't see us only having one. Because if you have two cars coming down from Bend or they're headed from Two Sisters, it would be difficult. Somebody's not going to sit there waiting for somebody else for forty-five minutes. That, I, I just think, I, I'm okay with this. I think it's a good idea.
And I would, I would, I would hesitate to cut it down to one if we could avoid that at any count. It, it would be worth it to keep, to keep two in there and to cut somewhere else.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
I just have a couple clarifying questions. So you're saying that we can pull out of the project at any time? Is there any sort of penalty if we don't have this go forward? And then secondly, we've received some grants that require ordinance changes and whatnot. So this, does, is there any strings attached to this one either?
There's no ordinance changes necessary. There's no match to it. If we pull out, if we pull out before we've paid for anything, before any, we've actually ordered any work, there's, there's no costs associated with it. And so there's no penalty. Obviously, if we, if we hire somebody and they start working on it, yeah, we're going to be, we're going to have some skin in the game there. But at the same time, we also will be able to get funding from the, from the, from Pacific Power, the actual grant. The thing that we need to make sure that we don't do is start and then not complete. Because that's, that's where we would get potentially hurt with the grant situation. That the grant is looking for a completed project, not a halfway done project.
So by the way, congratulations on getting that grant awarded. But lastly, you were saying that the consumer, the customer is going to be the one to pay for that. It's no cost to the city. You're going to try to get some sort of contract with the company that, that manages it, that we don't have to pay a monthly fee to for managing it.
Right. We want the, we want the usage of the charging stations to pay for the whole thing. So any, the ideal contract that we would pursue is where a company contracts to maintain and operate the charging stations that we own and they would take their fee out of that, out of the usage fees paid by the people using the charging stations. So we're not interested in providing free power to anyone. This is something they're going to have to pay for and the rates would be based on paying for the system.
The, the only thing that I can see is that we're not going to get as much usage as we would need probably for that vendor. And then we might have some sort of monthly fee agreement that we, and so that's the one thing that I would want to know first too.
Right. And that's going to be part of the contract that we'd have to approve with. And frankly, any contract that we, that we get is going to come before you for approval anyway. And so we'll be watching out for that. We'll be, we know that that's on your mind and it's on our mind as well. We'll be making sure that those contracts include that language. And we'll see what we get when we put out the RFP.
Thank you.
Well, I can see our company may take a hard look at that too, look at your point. Because if they just, charging stations just sit there and nobody ever uses them, they put all that money out with no return on their side either. So I can see it. Well, yeah, it's, yeah, they're not cheap.
It looks like we have a question online of where this specifically would be. And just to reiterate, this is Tenth Avenue, so right between Subway and Key Bank. It's a one-block-long street. This would require that street to be converted to a one-way and have parking on one side. That would be ninety-degree head-in parking. The plan is for that to be on the Key Bank side of the street. And ideally, the charging stations would be the closest parking spots to Main Street for maximum visibility.
So, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. But just a location question. Right now, there's, that corner is a big mess, right?
With the O dot.
Yeah. So when that's complete, is it still going to be accessible for this plan?
So when, when the O dot is done with their, with their work, it will, their work was, was designed around a two-way street. And so that's what it's designed for. That being said, converting a one, a, a two-way street to a one-way street is fairly inexpensive. It costs paint and reflectors and sometimes those three-foot-tall plastic. Whatever they're called. Delineators? Okay. So it's, it's fairly inexpensive. Can you do more? Sure. You can, you can do a bunch of curbing that is, is angled just the right way to house everything, but that's going to be a, a bigger cost than just what we're proposing here.
Well, what I, what I was, what I really meant was the sidewalk where they put the charging stations, is there still going to be ample room between that little parking wall and?
This would be placed, so the equipment ideally is, y- you want the equipment to be right up against the parking space because you don't want, you don't want cables extending across the, the walkway to somebody's vehicle. And so there is enough room in the right-of-way where essentially you would just have extra long parking spaces.
Okay.
And you'd put the equipment at the front, at the head of the parking space.
Mr. Mayor, so move is recommended.
I'll second that.
An emotional second, my roll call, please.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Let the record show of seven highs, no nays, approval of Pacific Power Oregon Clean Fuel Electric Mobility Grant Application. Next up, an RCA proposed vacation on the Redwood Street. We do have a Mr. Ruby here this evening for questions. Good evening. We'll go ahead and just have you name an address for the record and then any questions and how, presentation.
You want now?
Name and right, name.
Bill Ruby, William Ruby.
An address.
Uh, two, eight, three, two, two Kingsbury Road. Well, the reason, if you look at those pictures that we got, Redwood, I don't know if you have, do you have a, a city map of, or an aerial of it? Okay. Redwood Street, I believe, is about four hundred and thirty feet long and then it dead ends into John's property back here before you get to Wiley Creek. And if you look at Redwood Street, this is coming off of Fifty-third. In fact, that first picture there, I tried to get a picture of it looking down, but if you look at the last couple pictures. But if you look at the last couple pictures on the back, you'll see that, how steep that bank is. That bank's about 26 foot tall and drops in about 15 feet. So putting in Redwood Street going down there, what we've done is we've, we've separated the property down there into three separate lots. And with Redwood Street existing down through there, yeah, that's a picture of it. With Redwood Street existing, that makes that be the southern lot, almost unbuildable by the time you built Redwood Street in there. And with the three lots, it's a little over a million dollars worth of, of taxable property there. Once we get homes in there for the three properties. If we have to build Redwood Street, that eliminates the southern lot completely because the footprint of Redwood would be about 60 feet wide. And it, it provides no function. There's no city water to any of those lots. They stop at the railroad, well, stop the other side of the railroad tracks. So everybody had, down there has to have a well. Most of the properties are on septic down there. We are putting in pump stations that have to, those three lots will pump the sewer up to the city sewer and take care of that. And so if we could have a Redwood eliminated there, then that would allow us to develop those, one lot already has a home on it. And we have two other lots, but we keep running into the problem with Redwood Street being right there. I've talked to the different people of the city and, and Joe and, and the construction and planning says they never have it, have a thought of putting Redwood in because it would be just tremendously costly because of having to pump everything uphill. There's just, there's just no way it would even serve the city. And so that's why, if possible, we could have Redwood vacated and go ahead and utilize those two lots down there so that we can put some nice homes in there.
Any questions with council?
I do have a question. So access to the property is through an easement right now to some of those properties. Is that correct?
Correct.
So theoretically, that easement can be taken away, can it not?
No, that easement was granted by the railroad and it's recorded. And the property runs down through, in fact, if you look at the, where the, where the road comes in, where the easement is, that's all recorded easement to those properties down there also. They can never be taken away. They're recorded guaranteed easement down through there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, council?
Is recommended.
Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counsel Sanchez.
Yes.
Counsel Richards.
Yes.
Counsel Gerson.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counsel Coleman.
Yes.
Counsel Gorley.
Yes.
Counsel Trask.
Yes.
On record show of seven eyes, no nays, approval vacating Redwood Street.
So just, just to clarify, the recommendation that you voted on was to refer the proposal to the Sweet Home Planning Commission. And so they'll hold a public hearing on the matter. And I, I think my confidence is good that they will probably approve it. But after that, there will, it will come back to the, the city council for an ordinance to be approved that would actually do the vacating of the right-of-way.
But Mr. Mayor, could, could we make that, speed that up some? You know what? I know what you're talking about.
We have, there's, yeah, we're, we're just restrained by, by state law on this. We have specific notice requirements that we have to meet that are in state statute. And so we'll do our best to get it done as soon as possible, but we still have to obey the law.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Next up is the RCA for Water Treatment Plant Ross Water Valve Replacement.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselors, thank you. During the budget process, staff going back a couple of years identified raw water valve that is at its end of life and needs replacement. We budgeted $150,000 for this project. We recently got our engineer record and our integrator record to work together on this. It was previously already designed. It was blessed by our engineer record. We put together a plan and we asked that our integrator record go out and solicit bids for this new valve. They can also perform the work as our integrator record because the valve is a control valve that has computer controls that integrates with the filters at the water treatment plant. With this, the budget came back on this estimating with the valve about $129,000. We are asking to retain the remainder $20,000 just for contingencies if needed. But we are asking to move forward and allow our engineer record to procure an Alma valve, which was the low bid of about $17,000 to do the work for $111,969,000. To get the valve, I think there was 22 weeks, 18 weeks, 16 to 18 weeks. And we're asking a permission so we can move forward and get that replaced. It would improve the efficiency. Right now, staff runs that valve in a manual mode and it doesn't work with that plant because of its condition and we're looking to optimize that and hope we get approval. Do you have any questions? I can answer some. Also have Stephen here as well, if you need to dive down the leads a little bit.
Any questions, council? Council directive.
So move is recommended.
Second down.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counsel Trask.
Yes.
Counsel Gorley.
Yes.
Counsel Coleman.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counsel Gerson.
Yes.
Counsel Richards.
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez.
Yes.
At the record show of seven eyes, no nays, approval of water treatment plant raw valve, water, water valve replacement. No ordinance bills, committee reports.
We've got Western University started a new survey and they've met all the goals from the last one. We're looking at some community health outreach events. The two that do the health fair, Bob Dalton and Dick Bowles are looking for ways to engage the public on healthy topics. And so I'm very excited to see what's going to happen with that hut building event on Saturday. Six more were delivered to the FAC site. And the committee is up and going and Counselor Sanchez may have something to say about what they've been talking about.
Well, I appreciate being on that committee. And as of two committee meetings ago, we were scheduled to soft open on the 15th. And as of today, we could potentially be slightly delayed, but we're still hoping for a soft open on the 15th. We need to get back with Brock and see where they're at with construction.
All right, is it there? We had a library board meeting last week and the report's not in here yet because it was after this was created, but I just want to say that what our director is doing is just outstanding. She's connected with the schools. She has a senior going to come in and paint a room for the teens and just incredible connections with the community and improving this facility. And I'm highly impressed. That's all.
Mayor.
Could we request to go back to the administration, finance and property committee meetings to go ahead and approve those appointments?
Okay. I thought that we would be the consent agenda. We can.
So with the consent agenda, you do have the option to pull an item for consideration for the, this particular council meeting to approve. So, but we would handle it the way we would typically handle another business item.
Okay.
But we could also move it to the next council meeting if you wanted to.
It's up to the council, you guys.
As best as we can. Oh yeah, we have a recommendation. Yeah, we'd like to, I'd like to see us do the Lena Tucker event for the Park Tree and Mr. Walthies, Mr. Parker and Laura Wood and Todd Branson on the planning commission. Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counsel Sanchez. Counsel Richards.
Yes.
Counsel Coleman, or Gerson, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counsel Coleman.
Yes.
Counsel Gorley.
Yes.
Counsel Trask.
Yes, and I will tell you that I don't think we're completely full on that's, is that the, what's our, we've done?
We're full on the planning.
Okay.
Mission. We still have an appointment for the budget and we'll have some additional vacancies in the budget committee as well. And one for Park and Tree.
Yeah, okay.
On the record, the, the motion was approved by all seven counselors for the appointments. Any other committee meeting reports? On the mayor's report, the parade of lights, I thought was phenomenal. I think they did, Carl Hogan and the entire chamber, everybody did a phenomenal job. I was extremely impressed. It was fun to watch. It was great. Also Friday night, we had three Marines retired, came into our community. Counsel Trask, Counsel Coleman and I and our city manager met them at the city limits and it was very impressive. I liked the support we got from our city and welcome them. I don't have the exact miles that those guys tracked, but it, let's just say it was a few, like about 3,000 some miles that those guys tracked. We gave them some, I think you gave them some medallions. I'll let you speak on it, you're the city manager department, but we gave them several little tokens from the city for their appreciation of coming through our town. I actually even gave them three pairs of slip and step scissors that I originally had from, that I was initially given by Ed Seelander, the founder of the company back in the day. And a special package that he had gave to me, so I gave it to them. I was very appreciative of their service and then of what they stood for. They, the three Marines was Justin LeHue, Coleman Kinzer and Raymond Shinhara. Basically, they were supporting the missing in action. The Gold Star families and very other charitable organizations that they were involved in. And it was very impressive. They, with what they've done and how they structured this whole process. They, basically they had two walkers with one safety car following. But they rotated that safety car to walking. So it was kind of a pretty cool thing. And you know, if you really look at how, where they came from and what they tracked over, that's, that's very impressive. So they should be very close of not in Newport by now, but like I say, I'm, I was very impressed with what our community came out and done. And in the very next morning, we even met them again and congratulated them. So that was pretty cool. They were kind of in a hurry to get over to watch the Navy Army football game in Lebanon. And that was, they had, they had this insane as to what they were going to do. But I was very impressed. Next thing up, I got a presentation this evening I want to give. I'd like to relet him and my speech. As the year is about to come to an end, so does the role of an amazing individual who has served our city in distinction as a city counselor. I want to express a sincerest thank you to City Council member Diane Gerson. It has always been clear to me that you love the city, you take your role seriously. You have sacrificed a lot of service of this community. You do what you believe is right individually and as a group. You have protected the city and made it better. We get only so many heartbeats in life and that you are given so many of your service, years of service to this and is remarkable and inspiring. On any given council meeting, you have made decisions that will impact several generations on topics ranging from police, budget, trees, parks, transportation, parking, road maintenance, homelessness, medical services, mental health, housing, land use, water quality, sewer, utility rates, economic development, just to name a few. To do this, you have attended council meetings, committee meetings, hearings, public meetings, liaison meetings and public events. And you need to prepare for that, which you've done immaculately. Your council packets are typically more than a few pages and you reviewed each and every one of them and to every detail, it's amazing. There's a lot of time and you sure don't do it for the money or the recognition. Counsel Gerson has also done a great job as a mayor pro temp and I'm very grateful and I've been very honored. Even though you have still involved in some capacity in the city, you'll be sorely missed on this council. At this time, I'd like you to present. Thank you again. Just thank you for your service. And I know you talked about being on the budget committee and we're going to look forward to that. So thank you again, Diane. City manager report.
So, one, we will have budget committee vacancies opening up in January if anybody's interested. And also I just wanted to say that the parade of lights was absolutely beautiful and I want to commend staff, PD and Public Works as well as everyone who kind of came together to make that happen. It all happened fairly seamlessly, which was very impressive and it was beautiful. It was wonderful having the veterans come through and I also want to mention that we did hand out three challenge coins for our veterans and that was actually from the police department. And Chief Ogden was pulled away, so he would have otherwise been able to present those. But he was actually in the middle of taking some pretty important calls at that time. So appreciate the commitments as well. And then also want to call out Sweet Home Fire District for that beautiful welcome as well as the flag that was over Highway 20 and then as well as the escort that kind of continued with both PD and the fire district. It was a really, really neat welcome and it was exciting to see what the community was able to bring forward and all of the support there, even considering how cold it was that night. So that was really, really nice. I also just wanted to remind the community that I do have office hours from 1:00 to 2:30 every Thursday afternoon. And so far, I really want to thank everybody who has joined me and gotten to share their concerns and ideas for the city. That's been really exciting. And there's a few other things that is going to be coming up that want to have council be aware of. We are going to be, and I'll let our interim finance director speak to this a little bit as well. But we are going to be doing a mid-year financial report in January as well as bringing forward the supplemental budget. So since we're not going to have another council meeting until those are actually coming forward, wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that. And we're kind of excited to have that kind of come to rest and looking forward to bringing that into everyone's attention. I did pull out on the procurement item that I wanted to bring forward to council and we decided to pull on that. We want to do additional consideration and look at some additional contracts there as well. But I do plan to bring forward a procurement software system in January as well as a procurement policy and procedure that would utilize that as well. So that's another thing to just for everyone to be aware of. And Counselor Sanchez already mentioned, but we were hoping for a soft opening at the FAC facility this Thursday. There have been some additional hiccups, but